Open the meeting.
You guys are ready?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
We're gonna start recording.
Okay.
Sounds good. All right, I think we're ready to get started.
You're on.
All right, make a motion that we open up the planning board meeting for Tuesday, June twenty first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second. Second, all right. So, we are gonna start with the comprehensive plan steering committee, just because there might be some traffic issues with folks showing up for the other items listed above. Danny?
Yes, so, um, I know we kind, it feels like we just did this, but because the new fiscal year is coming up, we just need to reappoint our, um, members who wanted to be on the comprehensive master plan steering committee, it's right now John Stokes and Walter Sorensen. I'm assuming Wally wants to, again, be on it because he was involved in the first one. But, yeah, I don't know if, John, you wanna keep up with it, um, or if DJ or Chris, you wanna be a part of it. But, yeah, so we just need to reappoint, um, two members of the planning board, so.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. If we need someone, absolutely.
We can do three.
Do you wanna check with Wally, or can we have three?
Why not?
All right.
Okay. We just need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the new, the comprehensive planning steering committee from appointees from the planning board. Onto the committee. John, Brad, was it now, Walt, Wally?
Wally.
And Chris?
Yeah.
All right.
Second.
Okay. Do we have to vote on that?
You bet you do, yep.
Vote.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. All right.
Um, yep. Just minutes.
Okay, next up, meeting minutes from May seventeenth. I don't know if everybody had a chance to read them. Uh, but I.
I know. We're doing all of our administrative stuff first to try to get things out of the way. Do we wanna come back to the minutes?
Are they in?
Get things started?
Are they in here?
They are in there. I put them, I tried to do things chronologically, but we went out of chronological order. So, they're, um, at the end. They're the third to last page.
I don't know if everybody had a chance to take a look at them.
Here's a copy, John. Did you?
Thanks.
All right, make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes from our past meeting, I don't know what the date was, seventeenth, twenty-two.
Second.
All right, we'll vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous on the approval of the minutes. Okay. Um, so if we go back up to the top of the agenda, we had zero Center Street, I don't know who's here, that's you, all right.
Millennium Engineering, on behalf of my partner, Kevell, speaking to do a three lot A and R plan of their property, uh, which, it's one, as it exists, it's one piece of land with so many acres. And the town line goes through it. There's no bounding by deed of town line. So, portions of it are, the existing house are in West Newberry and the remainder, which is the majority of it, is in Groveland. What we're proposing is for, uh, the three lot A and R on the plan. We've met the criteria of both towns, we'd like to think, on this. This has already been approved by the West Newberry Planning Board, uh, two weeks ago. But they are holding off on endorsing the plan. And they wanted us to add the note with respect to lot three only. They're only going to, because the rest of it would be in Groveland. So, they are ready to endorse the plan at their next meeting, as long as the planning board for Groveland is okay with the plan also and endorses it prior to that.
Frontage on that, two seventy-seven. Lot of wetlands in the front there, huh, on the Center Street side, it's all wet.
Lot two had to have ex, more frontage because of the wetlands, so they had access.
They can access it to the, to the left?
Around the wetland.
Yeah.
We've already started doing site designs with a septic system and site designs for these properties. With that in mind, knowing that, um, the driveway would be on the lot one side of it, coming in along that side there. Obviously, it would have to be approved by conservation and everything about the town.
And this, this lot one kinda juts over to get the frontage that it needs, so is there enough room?
There's enough frontage, it has a hundred and fifty feet of frontage.
Right.
In the front there.
The, the plans do meet all of our zoning requirements, um, I'm just concerned about the wetlands, like you guys already noted. I do think conservation's gonna have a hard time because there is the twenty-five foot no build. No build zone. Yeah, but obviously, that's not a planning board.
They realize, they realize.
Yeah, yeah, so that's obviously not a planning board issue, they meet our zoning requirements, um, but you can see.
Yeah, but actually get a road.
Yeah, you can see we put under the signature block that, that notation saying that planning board endorsement does not, you know, we see X, Y, Z, um, so.
This is just to form the lots.
Every day.
Make a motion to accept. Yeah, any other, any other concerns?
No, like I said, I think, you know, conservation's gotta be a thing, but.
Yep, conservation can figure it out, but I think as far as planning board zoning, that's good. I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the A and R on the zero Center Street lot.
Second.
All right, we'll vote.
Aye.
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 Good luck.
You wanna sign it now?
Stick around.
Sometimes those things are terrible.
You know, they were the only two I could find today, too, and try to grab enough for.
They have to, are they dating it, did they date it? Thank you.
Good luck.
Not me.
Robbery. The access for lot two is the only question maybe.
Do you want it back on that?
Sure.
You're very welcome.
Have a good night.
You too.
Yep.
You too.
All right, next up is Oakland Terrace. Update on drainage issues and completion of project.
There's a microphone right there for you. Yep.
How you doing? Steve DeHulu, builder over there at Oakland, um, revised drainage that we did on the site, is what I'm here for.
This is from Lauren Gill.
So, um, I'll just, T E C went out to do their usual report and, um, noted that the drainage was done in a different location, as you can see noted on these plans. I did speak with Pete and I received an email from him saying that these drainage plans would satisfy the, uh, drainage issues that were happening on the site. I know DJ, you were, you were at that site visit.
Yep.
So, T E C does think that this would, this would satisfy, um, the issue, and then I'm assuming this is a letter from the homeowner, yeah. Okay, yeah. So, I just wanted to bring this in front of the board, um, also thank you for the documentation. And then, I've just been receiving some questions from homeowners as to when the project is gonna be finished out. Obviously, there are supply chain issues and things of that nature, but if you could just, if you have an update.
Yeah, I'm hoping everything will be done in, within the next four weeks. So, we're gonna put the hot top, and we own, uh, four inches of, uh, hot top, and then just finish one more pond, so, yeah.
That's all that's left to do.
That's all that's left.
Sorry, Steve, could you just say that one more time, I didn't quite catch it?
Excuse me?
Could you just say that one more time, I didn't quite catch it?
Yeah, okay, they get four weeks, uh, to finish the hot top, and then we have one more pond out front, and that should be complete. Uh, they're trying to do it this week, but we'll see if it gets done, so I'm hoping the next couple of weeks, the front pond will be done, you know?
So, this is that, this is the house that is very backward?
Right, yep, lot three, yeah, all the way in the back.
This is the, the long driveway off the right?
Yes. Yeah, it just was catching water at the end, and this is all new, where they asked me to get, try to get rid of this small area that's catching the water, and I said, well, it's not that easy. So, we ended up having to put a drain across the driveway, which was a big project, kinda, for me anyways, financially, you know?
And that just brings, that brings it out towards the back of there, is that the back of their property?
Right, most of it takes the water, the infiltrator that goes down that long driveway, but once that infiltrator fills up, you know, wants to come out the end because it's downhill. And now, we're puddles, we put a catch basin in, and then actually a pipe that goes out towards the, uh, low area.
How about the home that's in front of that with the, with the retention ponds?
Yep.
Is that, how's that?
Well, how's that coming?
Yeah.
So, we did add the pipe, uh, there was a pipe, I think it was added like ten feet, might have been a little more, might have been twenty, but it was all approved, and we didn't change that plan because that was a good plan, but it did erode. And we're gonna take care of that also, and then seat it, and then put some rip rap is all I have left on that, you know, and I'll make sure they're happy also.
Any timeline for when complete?
That one there, I'm hoping to be the next couple of weeks also, once they get over there, they'll do all this, it's not that much of a job, what they have, you know, left for that area.
All right, awesome, thank you.
Good?
Yeah.
T E C has gone inspected, they're, they're good, you said?
They looked this way, right?
Uh, yeah, the Johnson, the, um, engineer who goes out reported to Pete, and from what Pete understands in the pictures that Johnson took, he thinks that it'll be fine, he's not worried about it.
Okay. And the homeowner's happy, so that's good.
Yeah.
That's, okay. Thanks for the update.
Thank you for the update, appreciate that.
Do you wanna stick around for Benjamin Street? So, or, sorry, John, you're, I'm sorry.
That's next on the list, right?
Yeah, it is.
Benjamin Street extension, all right, so we've got retention pond.
Sorry, guy.
Yeah.
So, um, Benjamin Street Extension, um, there is a retention pond on the site that is catching stormwater for the property. It has an invasive Japanese knotweed issue at the moment, um, that is, we're working on figuring out how to handle it. T E C has been noting it on their reports for a while now, um, so that's kind of how it came up with the planning board. It's super close to Johnson's pond, which means obviously the Conservation Commission has its concerns, um, and kind of working with the DeHulu's and trying to figure out a solution to this. It's confusing when there are two boards invested in it, um, so we were hoping, or we were gonna ask if you, as a planning board, would feel comfortable kind of passing the gauntlet on to the Conservation Commission. So, it's easier, there's kind of only one point of, I mean, I'm the point of contact for both, but there's one board point of contact, we don't have to have the DeHulu's talking to the planning board and the Conservation Commission about both. I know they spoke with Mike Dempsey, our Conservation Commission Chairman, and they're gonna work on getting a meeting together with a, um, professional wetland scientist to work on the problem, so I just want to ask the planning board if you're okay with the Conservation Commission kind of taking on this portion of, of the project. And it's, the, knotweed has not, um, at this point, like, had the, like, had any, affected the, uh, functionality of the retention pond, so.
So, is the question how to eliminate it?
Right, because it's in the buffer zone, so if you weren't, you could use anything you want to kill it, round up or whatever, and most of it's out of the buffer zone, so I may stake it out and kill it over there. But the other area is growing, what I know of it, which probably a lot now, is it most likely isn't gonna go to Johnson's pond because it's all shaded and also already grown in. So, what it attacks is open land and fields and sunshine, which I created over there, and so, and it was, I've been, I lived there on the street for twenty-five years, I'd moved. But, I mean, it's always been there, you know what I mean, so, I mean, we just kinda hacked it down all the time, but now it's, uh, in the buffer zone, it's everybody, whatever, conservation.
The pond has been there for a long time, the retention pond?
The, probably a year or two now, you know?
Okay.
And I've been cutting it, you know, but it comes back, and that's what it does, but, you know, it takes a few years to cut it, and I've cut it three or four times this year already, you know, just to make everybody happy and make sure it's not getting towards Johnson's pond, which it doesn't seem to be going that way because of the coverage from the trees, and it's already grown in, but I'm not an expert on it, but.
Oh, yes, and Pete also thinks, sorry, thank you, Dina, Pete also feels as though the Conservation Commission is the right board to kinda handle something like this.
Sure. Right, okay.
And Mike said to me that he's gonna see if we could spray it, you know, but he just has to go through somebody to ask them, okay, can we spray it, and they'll be gone, you know, that's simple, really, but he just said, I can't spray it, you know?
Yeah, seems reasonable to, to let them take the point on that. As long as nothing's being done that affects the functionality of the, of the retention pond, I think that's fine.
Yeah, I, I don't see how anything the Conservation Commission would ask for.
Yeah, there's no reason to change the pond. So, do we need, do we need to, uh, make a motion and vote on that decision, or is that how you wanna handle it?
Yeah, I think that would be best.
Make a motion to, uh, let the Conservation Commission take ownership of the invasive species issue in the retention pond at Benjamin Street section, extension.
Second.
All right, we'll vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then, of course, I'm trying to get a building permit over there, and then, uh, you know, Pete just brought up those, uh, you know, issues, you know, I just wanna make sure, and Mike said
Yes.
for us, that it was okay, you know, to keep, continue, you know, so I just wanted to be able to continue, and we will take care of it one way or the other, you know?
So, um, what Steve's referring to there is that on the T E C reports that we get, um, it notes that there is invasive knotweed issue, and that T E C said that the planning board should hold the building permit until that issue is resolved, so my opinion, I think that now that it's a conservation issue, if the planning board is comfortable with me signing off on that, I would be comfortable doing that if you are. The only thing, which, Dina, I did see your email today, I just haven't gotten around to answering it, as, um, T E C, um, the way we, like, pay them, they put, um, the applicant puts money into an escrow account, and then the town technically pays T E C, technically? Like, it's a little, it's a little convoluted, yeah, so the only thing that I had, um, mentioned to Dina was that until the, like, outstanding items are paid for, we would hold a building permit, but if you want to negotiate something, we can do that, um, now, if you want, we can do that over email, you can give me a call, whatever. Yeah, you can just, yeah, okay, um, yeah, so, but I think if the Conservation Commission's taking over the knotweed issue, I don't, I think the planning board should feel comfortable signing off on a building permit if the board so chooses.
Okay. Sounds good.
Okay. Good?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Have a nice night, guys. Sounds good. Are you guys good? Okay.
Okay, next up, one eighty-three R Main Street. Generators?
Is that plus five?
Is that?
Yes, it is.
Just making sure you're ready, uh, good evening, my name is Jill Schaefer, I'm an attorney at Prince Labelle, we represent T-Mobile. And we're here to explain what happened, um, since the site plan approval back in January of two thousand and nineteen. So, the, generator was put in, and no one even knew what was going on until.
I'm not sure any of us were here then, so, we might need, we might need some history.
Of course, okay.
Do you want, I can give the really quick rundown if you want me to.
Why don't you do that, and then I'll.
Okay, so, yes, this was pre, um, these folks, so, so it's the cell tower out back. There's, we, the town leases out the property to some carrier, and then T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, other networks, um, lease out space on the pole to put their equipment on. One of, um, Jill's colleagues emailed me, I'm sorry, I can't remember his.
Chris Beadman.
Chris, thank you, um, asking or noting that their decision states that, um, which is in your packet, I highlighted, um, where we should be looking. Noticed that their decision states that they were to not install a diesel generator and to install a gas generator, a natural gas generator. Chris brought to our attention that a diesel generator was installed, and here we are today. In the process of kind of looking into this, because I also wasn't here at the time.
Concern a spill of the fuel?
So, um.
It's proximity.
Yeah, so it's in our aquifer overlay, um, and so Tom Cusick, at the time, our Water and Sewer Department Superintendent, he had concerns over that, so he had asked for a, um, natural gas generator to be used. Because it is in our, um, aquifer protection overlay, we do allow for, I'm a mess, I had everything nice and organized, um. Our bylaw does allow for storage of liquid, so, storage of liquid hazardous material, um, with the storage above ground or floor level on an impervious surface and either in containers or above-ground containers with a building or within a building or outdoors in covered containers or above-ground tanks in an area that has covered containment systems designed to hold ten percent of the total possible storage capacity of all containers or one hundred and ten percent of the largest container's storage capacity, whichever is greater. So, here we are today, essentially.
And I can have our, um, T-Mobile engineer expert give you the specs on how this generator actually does meet all of those qualifications. But before we get there, I guess I wanted to let you guys know that it was a different law firm that represented T-Mobile back in two thousand and nineteen. So, we're not sure why the special permit or the site plan approval was not recorded, we're not sure what happened, we really found out that the generator was mistakenly diesel over natural gas in March of this year, when T-Mobile went to get a, uh, an electrical permit. So, that's why we're here, we're here to explain that there was, you know, it was just an oversight, and the original plans in two thousand and nineteen did include the diesel generator. Mr. Curtis's comments in December of two thousand and eighteen, um, did specifically state, if it's a diesel fuel generator, T-Mobile must provide proper containment and possibly an alarm system to monitor spill, a spill. So, I was gonna defer to my colleague again, so he can tell you all about the alarms and the bells and the whistles and the spill trap and all that stuff that, you know, makes these new generators very safe. In fact, um, he was telling me today that they install them in other towns, you know, in areas close to wells, it's, it's very common. But then the only other thing I wanted to point out before you get into all of the technical issues, oh, is that, um, this T-Mobile gener, um, generator is not the only diesel generator, AT&amp;T has one there also, which is older, and we would say this T-Mobile one is much safer than the AT&amp;T one that's there currently. So, um, we did send over the spec sheet for.
I thought you said you were gonna.
Yep, yep, we have extras, so.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I hate to double print things.
Well, I agree, I agree, so, yeah, you wanna, um, you wanna come sit up here?
Yeah, all right.
And just so the planning board knows, I have reached out to AT&amp;T, because it was in two thousand and nineteen, I'm trying to track down a real human to get back to me. I'm trying. So, I have reached out to AT&amp;T because T-Mobile did bring to our attention that there was another diesel generator down there, so.
Are there more, or is it two?
I believe there's just two, our.
This is the beginning of a lot of these meetings, or?
I know, our Water and Sewer Commissioner did go down there to take a look, to just like, check it out, and he only saw two, so I'm assuming what was T-Mobile's and one was AT&amp;T's, so. And I have, um, reached out to our Water and Sewer Commissioner, and he is aware of it, um. As the Water and Sewer Commissioner, the old one was the original person who was like, I would like to see natural gas. He's aware.
So, here are the specs. And they did opt for this spill. And they attached the spill.
Well, the, they're, hi, uh, my name's Joseph Rollins, I'm here on behalf of T-Mobile. Just to briefly describe, you know, the generator that we're using, uh, the project for T-Mobile is called the Hardening. Post Sandy, a lot of cell sites went offline and, you know, were drowning because, uh, well, they were not on, on platforms in some cases, and in a lot of cases didn't have generators to support them to turn it back once the power was off, so T-Mobile decided to do this, um, everywhere. And we're using the Generax forty-eight KW diesels primarily, um, and they're double-hulled, uh, you know, their safety record is, is outstanding. And the items, uh, that the D E C were listing in terms of what the requirements were in order to have a diesel there, this unit meets all of those a hundred percent, so, yeah. So, we're, uh, it's double-hulled, the actual, uh, fuel storage tank itself is above ground, it's, uh, the generator sits on top of it, you can see in the picture there, and it is designed to hold, you know, uh, either ten percent of the total possible storage or a hundred and ten percent of the largest storage capacity, whichever is great. So, we, we, uh, we feel pretty confident that the generator will meet their expectations in terms of the safety of the equipment.
What is the storage capacity?
Two hundred and forty gallons typically, most carriers, T-Mobile included, we don't fill it to the capacity, you know, we, uh, the generator is usually, hopefully, only gonna be used if the power goes off, and then there's more problems, not just the, you know, being able to make calls, but, so the generator would run in the event of a total power loss. The generator is connected to the network, so the same thing that tells T-Mobile that there's a problem with the antenna or one of the radios, it's connected to the same system, so if the generator were to ever kick on, or there were a leak or a malfunction or any kind of like that, it immediately goes to what they call the NAC, which is the twenty-four seven, uh, system that alerts all the technicians that there's an issue and needs to be addressed. So, uh, the alarm system is in there, uh, you know, and again, it, uh, it's, uh, they will, they. So, the alarm system is in there, you know, and again, it, it's, they will, they do test them occasionally. I think it's maybe fifteen minutes every six months maybe, you know, just to, and they do that remotely. They don't even send a technician out there, they just kinda, you know, fire it up and turn it on, make sure it's working, gets the green lights back and shuts itself down. And that, we'd only do during normal business hours, not trying to disturb the neighbors or anything like that, so. During the day, during normal business hours, we would test it occasionally. And that's normal, you know, just to keep, make sure that it's functioning properly.
How would the system know if there was a leak?
So there are sensors in the, in the tank that actually addresses that, so, you know, it's, it is double-hulled, so there's one on the inside, one on the outside. So if there were actually a penetration, which I don't know how that would even occur, but assuming that it did happen, you know, the alarm would go, the sensor would react to that loss of pressure and alert T-Mobile and the NAC.
So it's self, is it self-contained or there was language also about it sitting on a certain type of-
Platform.
Impervious.
Yeah, yeah, it sits on a four-by-ten concrete pad, which is already out there. So yeah, it's sitting on a pad, the tank is, you know, you know, bolted to the, to the pad, and then the generator sits on the tank. And then it's, you know, connected up to the, to the, to the radios.
Annie, Annie, you said you talked to the Water Sewer Commissioner and what's his take on this?
More or less that obviously he would like to see the issue resolved. If the system didn't have the required containment system, then it would have to- He would like to see a way in which this could be solved with moving like the hazardous material as little as possible, you know, so if, if the sys, if the generator didn't have the containment system required or if it wasn't on the concrete pad, then that would involve moving it. Is it safer to just kind of move it on-site from one place to another while those get changed? Or is it better to like just pull the whole thing up and put natural gas in like the decision says? Essentially, he was just wanting to limit whatever potential impact that could potentially, you know, cause issues. If that makes sense.
And, yeah, the, the cost to change it to natural gas, there's, there's only been diesel generators there since the site was built in two thousand and four, so. There's only been diesel generators. To switch to natural gas or propane would be very costly. We'd have to run a line and I don't know how you'd get natural gas to the site, but-
You could do propane as well.
You could do propane as well.
Right, natural gas or propane.
Yeah.
That's probably your most cost-effective, effective, I would assume.
If we had to switch it.
Put a tank, put another tank there, yeah.
Yeah.
Would you say if you had permission?
No, I said if we had to switch it.
Oh, you just-
Yeah, yeah, I mean, clearly we would request a modification to the site plan approval, but.
I mean, obviously, like you said, you were not representing T-Mobile at the time, but do we have a statement from T-Mobile as to why they didn't abide by the initial ruling?
So, it was an oversight. The, the site plan approval never got recorded with the registry. And the project proceeded, once the approval was granted, the project proceeded, and like I said, I I only just got involved last week or so, but from what I've heard, they only found out in March of twenty twenty-two when they went to pull an electrical permit, that it was diesel, and then when they read the special permit, it was like, oh, we have diesel out there. So, yeah, we reached out to the town, that's why we're here, to sort of see if there's a way we can amend the special, that's site plan approval here, modify it to prevent this, what we'll say, very safe diesel generator.
The only thing I see is that we're, whatever we decide on here is setting a precedent because we obviously have an issue with AT&amp;T as well, that has a diesel generator, it's an older version as well. So we need to make sure whatever decision we make is gonna be, it's gonna follow them as well, we don't, you know, likely we're gonna want the proper way.
The only thing is, I, I don't know what approval AT&amp;T got, I did not research.
We don't know their language, we don't, right, we don't know the contract.
Right.
Their approval says that no hazardous material will be stored on-site. It is not as specific as T-Mobile's, but it does say no hazardous material will be stored on-site. So, they should not have a diesel generator down, down there either, from my interpretation of the, that original decision that was issued to AT&amp;T. I would consider diesel hazardous.
Right, I guess we would also say though that it's not necessarily storage of hazardous chemicals because the generator is using the fuel, so.
I would just say that for T-Mobile's perspective, when you look at those kind of language, you're really saying, you know, T-Mobile comes there with like tubs and stores stuff that they don't want to or use. So, we don't, we don't see that language as covering the generators, you know, whether it's propane or diesel or natural gas, and it's all potentially hazardous.
Yes, but with the well being there, that's, that's the issue, you have liquid, liquid now going into a well, whereas natural gas would be a completely different.
I would say this, we've, we've done a few generators, in fact, just recently, I don't know if you have friends or colleagues over at Chelmsford, but we just installed a diesel generator right at their water tank, because that's where the radios are. And, you know, they were, they were good with the process and it's the exact same, actually, it's the exact same make and model that we, that were, that we put here. I would also say also that T-Mobile didn't actually do the permitting and the site plan review for this site. The tower company that owns the tower, it's called SBA, they self-perform, which includes for them leasing work and doing the permitting, so it really did catch T-Mobile totally unawares, so.
But T-Mobile's when they installed the generator, right?
Yeah, 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 absolutely, hired a G C, did all, got the billing permit.
I mean, I mean, in our record, e- even though that the diesel's not in tubs or barrels on the site, even though it, I would still consider that being stored in the generator because it's not an actively used equipment except for your, you know, six-month, fifteen-minute test or whatever, right? So, so I, I think that would meet the criteria for being stored, at least in my view.
I, I agree, it's, it's, because it's just temporarily sitting there in case it's emergency use only.
Right, right.
It's basically holding fuel there all year long.
It's great that the system is updated, it's an updated system that it has the alarming capability and it can be monitored remotely, you know, from the NAC or whatnot, but at the same time, that repair, if, if it was ever punctured, that two hundred gallons of, of diesel fuel would probably not be stopped until it was empty.
I'm wondering if the, even though the tank has built-in self-storage, does, is the platform supposed to have containment as well? Is if the-
Not per what our bylaw says.
Because the tank could fail.
I think it's just on like a pad, right?
Yeah, right, we're just on right on the pad.
So, yeah, it just says on, above ground or store level, or, sorry, above ground or floor level. In an area that is covered, that has a covered containment system designed to hold either ten percent of the total possible storage capacity of all containers or one hundred one hundred and ten percent of the largest container's storage capacity, whichever is greater.
This is the same issue that came up at Foddy's, right?
Yeah.
The, the chamber that the tanks are held in is what ultimately stops any fuel from entering the aquifer.
Yep, yeah, it's essentially the same, their, Foddy's is a gas station, just for, that had a similar, I mean, obviously on a very different scale. But was in the, is in the aquifer protection zone and, and kind of went through this, so that's, that's why, that's who Foddy is.
For just for the sake of discussion, if one of the sensors was tripped on this, indicating a malfunction in the tank, what would the response time and plan be to, to cover any incident?
Oh gosh, well, sensors will go off, alarms will go off in the NAC. The closest technician that's on duty would respond to the site and probably call a fire department right away. You know, that would be, I don't know, that's probably the standard process. Can't even think, and I've done a bunch of these generators in the last few years, I can't think of any situation where we've actually had.
No, no, I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm not calling the, calling the specs of the generator into question here, just, you know, it's, just again, for, for discussions, we have it on record, you know, what, you know, if, if it was to happen, you know, obviously there were, there were plans in place, say, if this happens, the decision tree goes that way, right, so.
We have, yeah, so the alarms would go off, the guy, the technicians at the NAC would come out, they would, you know, obviously call a fire to secure the area and then have our technicians, you know, they have relationships with people that do, you know, environmental containment, so. Go there and secure it.
So, so there's a technician responsible for, for monitoring this area on-call twenty-four-seven?
Correct.
And what, what, do we have any idea of the average response time from when the, from when a sensor is tripped to when a call is made for containment?
I'm not sure where- Aren't, where the, I'm not sure where our technician is stationed relative to Berlin.
Yeah, I mean, ju- just generality sayings.
I would say no more than fifteen, twenty minutes. Once the alarm goes off, maybe a half hour, but somewhere in that range, fifteen to twenty. It's, it's, it's something that all the carriers take very seriously. If there's ever a problem with a tower, I mean, we've had antennas actually fall off towers, that's a thing. So anytime calls are interrupted for any reason, the response is just about immediate. And that would be the same for this, no difference.
How about maintenance and you said, we have, I know we have remote monitoring, but onsite monitoring, how often do they come in?
Maybe once every six months, you know, once the site is up or up and running, it's operational, it's been tested and so forth. You know, they'll come out and visually inspect it maybe once every six months or so, but very, you know, very infrequently, only, only as needed. And these units are self-sustaining, you know, we've not had a problem with them, so.
And then with regard to the fire department, T-Mobile had mentioned to me that we could offer to pull the equivalent of an FP zero-zero-six permit so that the fire department actually issues the permit and inspects it, inspects the generator on an annual basis, so your fire department would be involved too.
Yeah, and I think we had similar requirements at Foddy's for regular inspections and report back to the Planning Board.
Yeah, that's also, that's part of our process, we do the FP zero-zero-six. In Massachusetts, well, every state's a little different, so I've done Connecticut, Massachusetts, Rhode Island. So in Massachusetts, everybody requires an FP zero-zero-six, for which, whatever reason, SBA didn't pull, okay? But we'd be more than happy to correct that and do that now and include the fire department in the review process, absolutely. Because they, you know, if Scotty, if something were to happen, they'd be one of the first people on-site, so, it's important.
I'm really new to the, to the board, I really don't know how to, whether this is something that table and talk to Brad with, being that he's not here, and if his, wanted to speak with the fire, the fire chief and the any type of inspections that need to be done for the townwide, I don't know, Annie, do you have any?
Um, I have reached out to Colin, Colin, our Water and Sewer Superintendent, we have water made first.
Oh, right.
Um, for, so he wasn't able to make it. If you would like, I can schedule a meeting and make sure that Brad and the other members were on, on the board when this took place.
Brad's our chairman, who's not here, who's, was on the board at the time, as well as Walt.
Okay. Yeah. Wally, yeah.
Wally is also-
And I believe Jim was on the board as well.
Yeah.
Um, but then I can also ask the fire chief if he-
I was gonna say, it might be good to hit the fire to weigh in as well, just because they'd be much responsible for the response, so.
I think by then maybe we'll have more information from AT&amp;T as well, and I think we just need to gather a little bit more information from, from all of the parties involved. I, it might be seeing something, I think what you were alluding to around the like emerg, like the response timing and plan would be nice to see, like, in writing if there is something, in terms of how that process works.
Okay, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm sure they probably have some type of four-round, guaranteed four-hour turnaround time for on-call. But also the, actually, the, this, the process of what, what they would do and who's called and those response times if, if those could be-
Yeah. Definitely provide that more information for you.
And I think you also mentioned there's a sort of a maintenance and test plan.
Yeah.
You could probably narrow that, nail that down more specifically, right?
Yeah, it's, again, there's very little maintenance associated with the generator. You know, they come out visually inspected maybe once every six months and they're tested, you know, on the, remotely to make sure that it fires up properly and turns itself off and all that good stuff, so.
It just, it's a backup, right?
They might be able to-
It's a backup, and that's the, only a little bit of the concern because it's, it's hardly ever used. So all of a sudden, if it has to kick on for a long period of time, now you don't know what the function's gonna be because you're only running it fifteen minutes. Now, typically when it goes down, it's gonna go down in some type of storm, snowstorm or something, now you, you're pushing it to the test. So that's the only, you know, small. And being that we have another provider who has the same type of issue with a much older unit, who has, it's probably a lot less safe, that we need to figure out as well, so. Just make this a bigger party, so.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, thank you.
In the interim too, could they move forward with the FP zero-zero-six, you think, or?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Annie, would that be prudent, you think, or?
Sorry, say that one more time.
Have them push forward with the FP zero-zero-six?
The fire department?
Yeah.
Yeah. Because that should be done anyway, correct?
Yeah.
Something that was an oversight.
Yeah, fuel storage department, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else on that one?
No, I don't think I, thank you very much for giving us the education.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I will just say, so our next meeting technically, it's, so we do the first and third Tuesday of the month. The next one is July fifth. And I have a feeling we might have some attendance issues.
I will not be here.
Yeah. So, yeah, so.
And I will not be on the third Thursday.
You won't, Tuesday?
I won't be on the third week of July.
Okay, so maybe we can try for the second week of, of July, just, I had, I looked ahead for another reason and I was like, we're, there's no way we're doing the first week of July, so. But I'll be in touch.
Yeah, we, we don't intend to try to drag it out or anything, we just wanna get a resolve for everybody, so.
Hopefully.
Awesome, thank you very much for coming in, appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you both. Alright, next up is roadway length. Clarification of roadway length requirements for subdivisions.
Yes, so. Alright.
Please explain, because I was reading it and I didn't really know what we were going for here.
Yeah, so this, this does require a bit of history as well, so one oh-six King Street, one of our big developments we have going on, there was some back and forth about how dead-end roadways, roadway should be measured, John, you were here for this.
Where's the end point, is it to the center of the circle, to the end?
Is it around, and so.
There are limits on length, so.
Yeah, so the, yeah.
If somebody's over, are they over or are they not, depends on your background.
Exactly, so, and at the time, the Planning Board had said, we will look into this for clarification because in our last, I think, four subdivisions, it has been measured differently. So, obviously Rebecca and I, we switched roles around, so it was re-brought to our attention that this is something that we said we would talk about. So I looked into some stuff, I found some other information from other towns in the surrounding area. There was surprisingly little that I could find from other towns, I was kind of surprised because I did basically the entire Merrimack Valley and was like trying to search through their bylaws.
Like, nobody defines it, or there's no consistency, or?
No consistency and no one defines it. Most of it, I, I, I just, I mean, West Newbury, Newbury and North Andover were the only towns where I was able to find something. But so, I, I didn't intend for the board to make any decisions, but to kind of just start thinking about how we wanna do something like this. I do, I was speaking with Rebecca, I believe, and one of the points that I thought really kind of struck me where I was like, oh, that kind of makes sense, was that the cul-de-sac itself, that provides frontage to those houses on the end of the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, that should be considered part of the roadway because roadways provide front- So, that should be considered part of the roadway, because roadways provide frontage. That's my personal take on it, I thought that made a lot of sense to me, um, since we are talking about zoning and. Frontage that comes naturally with it, so I thought that made a lot of sense to include the entire cul-de-sac and the entire roadway length, but. Again, this is kinda something that I didn't think we would make any type of decision on, but kinda get the gears turning.
Measure it on the center line of the road, around, like, you know what I mean, cause outside is gonna be longer.
Exactly, cause it would really impact.
That's what the frontage is, technically, on the outside of the road, so.
Measure it to the furthest back, so, so would, would it, would it be the curb or curb cut at the furthest back on the center line?
Yeah, so there are a lot of different ways in which you can measure a road, turns out, um, yeah, so. Is it center line for the kind of, the, the straight part of the road, and then you go. The exact circumference of, like you said, where, where the curbing is, or do you do the center line of the cul-de-sac? Do you do like the small circle of the cul-de-sac, like, do we do to the, where the cul-de-sac starts? Um, do you do to the end of the cul-de-sac, the middle of the cul-de-sac, there's a lot of different ways in which it could be measured. That would all have a serious impact on.
Is, is there any guideline in the, in the Commonwealth statutes or regs or anything like that?
I'm not sure, I would think probably not, considering all towns seem to be kind of doing it in flux, but I didn't think to look at MGL. To see.
Yeah, I mean, they, they might just give guidelines, right, kinda.
Yeah. Yeah, I can definitely look.
In terms, I can understand, you know, like soccer fields can be between this, this length and that length, as long as they're in those measurements, right?
Yeah, the real, the reason they, well, and the thing is, the reason they do the, um, uh. Length, because they don't want like incredibly long dead end streets, it's, it's a bad look for public safety and. Just also utilities and everything like that, so.
I mean, what, West Newbury seems, at least, they're specifying along the center line to the beginning of the throat of the turnaround, so they're not counting the turnaround. They're just going to the beginning of the turnaround.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
At your earlier point, that doesn't count all the.
Doesn't count the frontage, right, so if you wanna, if you were gonna use the frontage argument as a way to sort of, as your basis, then. You would almost wanna measure it on the outside, you could go center line to the beginning of the circle, and then you'd have to measure the.
The like outer di- the circumference.
Yeah, and get basically, it would be the frontage.
That's cool.
Yeah, municipal, municipal geography, um, yeah, but then you look at Newbury and they say along the center line of the cul-de-sac, oh wait.
Cause if you, if you don't count this, the cul-de-sac, you could have seven hundred and fifty feet to the beginning of this cul-de-sac, and how long is a, I mean, the cul-de-sac could add another.
It could add a lot, depending on how big the turnaround is, yeah, so.
And then, is there, are there any standards in place for cul-de-sacks, or are we, well, watched on how big cul-de-sacks can be?
We base most of our, I'm fairly certain we base our cul-de-sacks off what our current fire department has as far as equipment. And what is easiest for them to.
So, so min's not maxes?
Yes, yeah. But again, that, if, if we do change this bylaw, that's something we can specify as well.
You've got like a cherry tree lane that goes down and has like a big oval at the end, you know, it's not really a cul-de-sac, it's.
It's very weird, yeah, yeah, so.
How does that get measured, you, you would need to count the length of the road, I would think, around that.
I wouldn't consider that a cul-de-sac.
So, it's a road, so it's a road that comes up and then the road goes, just.
It just makes an oval around a big island and it come, so it, it's a dead end.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's.
Weird.
Yeah.
So, just to get your, uh, gears turning, but I can.
I mean, the main reason for the limitation is it's public safety.
On the emergency access.
And services too, cause if we, um. It, it's public safety, absolutely, but it's also services, like, um, for one forty-two King Street, the super long driveway. They aren't getting water to that house, because the driveway is too long. And the water, the water and sewage superintendent said that, no, the, the water would be sitting too stagnant in the line, and it would be bad water, so. You're not gonna be on water, you're gonna do a well instead, so, it's like, you wanna looped system, it's like for Sewell Street, the big forty B project. They're looping their water system down Nelson Street, so that the water isn't just like. I mean, our water and superintendent can explain better than I can, but there's public safety, but also utility, um, concerns as well.
Yeah.
And honestly, the DPW also probably would like less dead end streets, so, but. I can also, um, reach out to TEC, the engineering company we use most often, um. They have a good grasp of other towns' bylaws with things like this, I can reach out to them and see, kinda pick their brain about what they see most often, what. Other towns, cause I know they are beyond the Merrimack Valley.
Newbury goes to the rearmost point of the sideline of the turnaround.
Yeah, and then.
North Andover says maximum length roadway plus turnaround, so they're including the length of the turnaround at six hundred feet, they're even stricter.
Yep. Yeah, so they kind of all say different things.
So that's measuring the perimeter of the cul-de-sac, or directly through the middle to the edge?
I think Newbury sounds like it goes straight through to the backside.
Yeah.
North Andover sounds like it would be the roadway and the turnaround, like the length of the turnaround, so they're all different, all three examples. We just need to be clear about what our definition is, so that it's known, I mean, there's no right way to do it, I don't think, it's just, we need to be clear about what it's gonna be.
Yeah, especially because it has been interpreted in different ways the last few times, um, yeah, we just need some clarification.
That's the issue, the last few times, we've had three different ways, it's three different new ones of a building, and they have four different ways, four different ways of being built.
Interpretations, yeah, um.
Okay.
So.
And then they come in and they say, well, you approved this one, and they say, well, it was measured differently.
With the language differently, yeah.
And then people get upset, and rightfully so, but, so yeah, that's bad.
So, what's the next step on this then?
Next up, I can reach out to TEC again, actually, I have my, um, Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, planning meeting on Thursday. So I can.
Pick some brains?
Pick some brains, for sure, I can ask at the meeting. What other planners, cause it's all of the Merrimack Valley is on those meetings, all of the planners from all of the towns, so I can reach out to them and see what they think, because. I'm sure we're not unique in this situation.
But overall, big picture process, this is bylaw change, so we would draft up new language and then it would go.
We wouldn't have to do this at town meeting, cause it's part of our subdivision bylaws, not our zoning bylaws, so we can make this change. Um, whenever we feel comfortable to do so, yeah.
Yeah, I don't say if we can check MGL to see if there's anything.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I definitely will.
Ob- obviously, they, they don't state a number, but maybe they state some.
Recommendation.
Kinda.
Yeah, if anything, I think they would be on the maximum size. You know, but I'll definitely look.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so that's, I think that's all the items, and town planner updates?
Oh, yeah, we do have some more stuff, guys. So, um, town planner update, so there, that sign at Whitestone, or at George Street for Whitestone Village, it's there, looks great. Um, so that got put up, I haven't heard any new complaints, so that's good, um.
How long ago was it put up?
At least a month and a half ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
I haven't noticed it, so.
I hadn't.
Doesn't stand out.
It's, yeah. But you, have you tried to turn onto the street?
No, not before, prior to the issues, I actually went down to see what it was.
Yeah.
The issue, but.
See what it was all about.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so, we'll see, um, it's yellow, with black writing, and it says, no entrance to Whitestone Village. So, we'll see.
Facing, straight out?
Oh, yeah.
It's on the right side now. Not with the stop sign, right?
No, because there is still that sign that's there.
It is, okay.
Yeah, that, I don't think that was, I don't think the highway department took that down.
Was left in place.
Yeah, which, um.
Take a ride by.
And then, so, the MVPC is working with, um, our MS four permit, so it's basically stormwater. Permit, and they have recommended some bylaw updates for Groveland, um, we're gonna be getting like a formal recommendation list shortly. Um, but I had like kinda the preliminary talks about a couple of things Groveland can do to better our stormwater prevention. Um, and some of that includes, you know. When someone comes in to do a subdivision, we require them to do, to do a mock-up of the conservation subdivision. That we allow for in our, um, zoning bylaws, so the conservation subdivision, you have a little leniency as far as frontage and things like that. If you provide a certain amount of open space and, uh, like lesser amount of permeable pavement or impervious pavement. Um, reducing the size of our parking spaces, cause we have a larger parking space requirement than every other town in the Merrimack Valley. Which I found very interesting, um.
For commercial space, for?
For just like our regular parking spaces that we, we require businesses to have, yeah.
Like a business needs X number of sponsors?
By how much?
Couple feet.
Really?
Yeah, there's like, I think the like standard that like everyone uses is like nine by eighteen or something, and I think we're like ten by twenty.
Spot size, like an individual spot size.
Yep, I mean, we do have our issues with our actual spot, parking spot. Calculations, those are also a bit tricky, um, so I asked them to help us with that too. Um, but then other things, like we have a stormwater permit that people have to go through if they disturb a certain amount of land, um. But doing like a smaller scale permit that wouldn't go to the planning board, zoning board, or conservation commission, but instead just go to the town planner, conservation agent, or something like that. For smaller projects, to, to make sure that people have their eyes on them, so we'll be seeing those in the future. Um, again, I just mentioned one forty-two King Street, so all of the clearing work on that has taken place, all of the logging work. Um, they have their erosion controls up, um, they're still looking for a site contractor, so the homeowner is doing some of the stump work right now, so it's slow progress. But I've been keeping up to date with it.
One forty-two, that's that long, the long Groveland?
Mm-hmm, it used to be two forty-five.
Center or something.
Center, yep, um, one oh six King Street is making great progress, um, they've done a lot of, uh, grading work for the street. Um, things there are looking good, their erosion controls have stayed in place, um, they were planning on starting the required water main improvements. Within the next couple of weeks, that might have changed with the water main break that happened today, um, but I'll keep you updated. Um, I've been, I was going to, actually, we, um, it's time to reorganize our board, so new chairman, uh, vice chair and all of that. But obviously, we're a little short, short staff today, so, um, I was thinking we could do that later. And then other updates, um, yeah, that's a lot, so that's it, I don't, can't think, I don't think there's anything else. Um.
No, no news on the MBTA community thing?
Crickets, um, we, so we're in the process of reorganizing town hall, um. And Sam Johnson, our building inspector and zoning enforcement officer, has taken the lead on that, and I touched base with him recently, cause he's. Working on the MBTA stuff with me and Groveland, and then in West Newbury as well, and we were both like, we haven't heard anything. Um, about it, we don't even, we haven't even received notification that like the draft guidelines have been like fully finalized, and like here they are. Um, so once the reorganization is done and he's less busy, we're gonna sit back down again and kind of be like, all right, like, what's going on? Because like I mentioned on Thursday, I had the MVPC meeting with the town planners, and at the one last month, someone else was like, has anyone done anything with this? And everyone's like, no, we've heard nothing, um, so we at least have the benefit of having, um. An extra year, because we're an adjacent community, um, but like communities like, I mean, for Haville, it's a little different because of the set, scale of the town, but. They have to have an article for this upcoming annual town meeting for this MBTA zoning. We can wait until town meeting twenty twenty-four, um, so. Yeah, nothing, it's been really weird, it's been really weird that we haven't received anything.
How about the, um, master plan process?
They're still digging away through, through their survey comments, they've started to draft stuff up. Um, with vacations and everything, we weren't able to have our monthly meeting, so we're gonna be having it in a couple of weeks. Um, but we should be seeing, um, the draft second survey, and we should be planning another steering committee soon. Um, but there, um, Rebecca posted on our Facebook page, the, a couple of the boards from our meetings. Um, so I'm currently compiling all of the comments that were on those and sending them out to our consultants. There's no easy way to extrapolate Facebook comments, I'm realizing, so I'm just sitting there screenshotting and putting them in folders, it's great.
Can we imagine?
It's, yeah, but I'll get there, I even Googled, I was like, is there an easier way to do this, there's not, but yeah, and then. That's it, no, I have, we haven't had any new, any other TRC meetings. Um. Yeah, there aren't many big parcels left, that doesn't mean there isn't more building going on, so, we'll see. Oh, um, the board of selectmen tonight, um, FODI's gas station, Groveland Gas, they asked for an increase in their used permit. Your, their used cars sale permit, so right now they can have six cars for sale on their lot, and they asked to increase that to ten. Um, but because of the parking situation there, they're short on their required parking. Um, so depending on what the board of selectmen does tonight, uh, Sam and I put together a letter stating as such that the, the math kind of doesn't add up on their parking spots. So depending on what the board of selectmen says tonight, it might get kicked back to us for a permit, special permit for a reduced parking. It's planning, not zoning, I was, I was wrong at our zoning board meeting, so, um. Yeah, I don't, I don't know what's going on over there with that, so we'll see, but they're like a couple spots short, and it was kind of like. Do you count the pump spots as parking spots, do you count, it was, it's a thing.
Well, if you update our parking spot sizing, then.
Well, yeah, exactly, so, we need.
Just change that, that whole math.
That's right, you just got an, you just gained a spot.
Exactly, so, and that, it was, the timing of it was funny with all of it too, so, um, we might be seeing that, I'll keep you guys updated. Um, but yeah, I think that.
When did their, speaking of tanks, when did their tank become operational, or is it yet?
Oh, it's not yet.
It's not in yet, that's right.
No, they're anticipating the tank spots as spots, and they also said that each bay had spots inside, which.
Tank, they're still waiting on the tanks, right?
They haven't, we have not received the design for the tanks to approve yet. Should be getting them in a couple of weeks though, actually, oh, and then, um, eight ninety-five Salem Street, great progress, Baldini and Daniels new place.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's going up fast.
Yeah, it's going up fast and everything's been looking good, TEC is sending good reports.
I don't know that the planning board had any role in the bike, bike path, but that's nearing completion, I think, there's been a lot of.
There's been a lot of use.
Chatter.
Use, there's been a lot of use.
The trail is closed and it should not be used.
No, I, I must tell that some people as I was driving by earlier.
But I'm not, I'm not sure, I mean, certain entrances are clearly blocked off, like on School Street, there's like jersey barriers in the way.
People, people driving around.
Uh, yeah.
I, I saw a nice old couple riding their bike down the path today, coming right on School Street.
Yeah.
Yep.
They looked like they had a great time.
The trail, it is almost done, I think.
It looks good, and it looks like it's kind of open in certain areas.
Looks great, I mean, it looks really good, I can't wait for it to be done.
No, yeah, the fencing looks nice on it.
We're getting there, and then I believe, um, Haville and Georgetown just received funding to make the connections. On either side, so I don't know when those will be done, but it's in really, like, we're in really good shape to make a really good connection. Um, but it should be done soon, we get updates from, um, Mast D O T on how the project's going, they're gonna be doing the guardrail for another couple of weeks, I think. There's a lot of guardrail going in, um, we still need kiosks, benches, um, I believe there are gonna be trashcans at the ends. Kind of where the trail intersects the streets.
Yeah.
Um.
Kiosks, like?
Yes, kiosks, um, like informational kiosks with Groveland history.
Oh, I, I see what you're saying, all right, all right.
Yeah, they look really good, um, one of them has like, oh, yeah, one of them has Groveland history and the other one's all about the turtles. Those turtles, um, yeah, the trail's coming along soon, I, I would think if things go along as they have been, by the end of the summer. We could be fully complete, but the project's not set to actually be complete until twenty twenty-four, but. Spring of twenty twenty-four.
So they're in the schedule?
Yes, very much so, yeah, they got a lot of work done this winter, tropi- the contracting company, Tropiano, that we've been working with, has been amazing.
Good weather for a while.
Mm-hmm, and very limited issues as well, we've had like only one, like, big hiccup, that was solved, so.
Well, it's looking good so far.
Yes, we do have more things under other items, sorry.
Oh, we have more items.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
Recently anticipated at time of posting.
Yeah.
That's our nice schedule, I like that.
I stole that one from Rebecca. Um.
Do we accept the town planner update?
Oh, I don't think you have to make a motion on it, but you can.
Thank you very much for all that.
Can we vote to reject it? Can we vote to reject it?
So, a month or two ago, we saw eighteen King Street A and R, which was that lot line change that we had to kick back to the zoning board because it was changing to pre-existing non-conforming lots. So the bo, planning, zoning board, so Chris, you're familiar with this, approved it, so they're just back in front of us tonight to just get the plans signed for what they originally wanted. If the planning board so chooses.
Yeah, we just wanted zoning board's opinion on it, right?
Yeah.
Well, if they had to go to, they had to get the zoning board approval first, cause if we did it and changed it, then they wouldn't have been able to go back and do any type of updates on the.
Well, they would, they would have, they would have had to have come back and.
Right, they would have had to come back and not do any type of updates if there was nothing scheduled, so.
More, more efficient, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, like they would have had to put like non-buildable lots because they would have created two un-conforming lots, but zoning said.
They were gonna give up their grandfather status or something, wasn't there?
Yeah, if, if they, by changing the lot line, they lose their grandfathered status, so now they're gonna be, now they're, they're gonna lose their grandfather legal non-conforming status and just be legal permitted, non-conforming.
They're an approved non-conforming lot.
Exactly, yeah, because a couple of the, they had some setback non-conformities and those were improved by the lot line change, so.
Did you make that a motion to accept that, or just have to sign off on it?
The signing off would be the motion to accept, so we can do that, or we can do that later because they're not here waiting for us. The other thing was that we every year have to send in your signatures to the state and so you need to sign this piece of paper, and then the other thing.
Sounds like my mother was telling me not to sign.
Professor, I cannot just sign.
Sign something.
It's okay. What's up? We'll talk about it here, um, it's just, so, and then another couple of things, I was talking to Beth, kind of our town clerk about kind of just administrative stuff with the new fiscal year coming up, so Chris, you need to sign the annual distribution for the open meeting law. That you received the open meeting law, you just need to sign that you received it, and I can email you a copy of it.
Okay.
I did have to sign it twice.
Okay.
You just have to go to the town clerk, you do sign this.
Oh, I, I, I thought, I thought she had me sign that when I went over, went over.
I think you signed something else.
Okay.
I think you signed.
Whatever she threw in front of me.
There's a lot of things.
Yeah, okay.
Um, Wally has to do his ethics training, which I emailed him about, cause I knew he wasn't gonna be here. Jimbo Gijas needs to be reappointed, which he is being tonight, and he has to do his online training, which I was going to tell him about today, but he's not here. Um, John, you.
Need to see Beth.
Need to see Beth. I think that's it, as far as that goes, so yeah, really it's just you, Chris, the open meeting law annual distribution, which I can email you a copy of, and I think you can just email, like, she provides like a sign-off sheet that you can just like sign and then like scan over to her.
All right.
And then all the, so there's that, um, and then um, one more thing, one more appointment, for the community preservation committee, the planning board needs to appoint their representative, who's, it's been Jimbo Gijas in the past, and Mike, I was speaking to Mike Jemsey, who's the chairman of the community preservation commission, and Jim does wanna remain appointed as the CP CH, uh.
The appointee from the planning board?
Yes, thank you.
So moved.
Okay, thank you.
Can we vote on that?
Yes.
Aye.
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 Great. And that's actually it.
Are you sure?
I hope so. Yeah, cause we did the minutes already, we did the, uh, the steering committee for the master plan already, so, yeah, I think I can agree, yeah.
All right, I will make a motion to adjourn at eight fifteen P M.
Second. All right. We're adjourned? Oh, I?
Aye.
All right.